Please take your seats. Thank you. I'd like to call to order this County Board Committee of the whole on Thursday, November 13th at 6:30.
We don't.
Two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. You're right. You got anybody in there? Two. All right. Again, as I said, and I'll repeat in instant replay, Thursday, November 13th, 6:30 PM, the Committee of the whole called to order. Roll call, please.
Coort.
President.
Esri.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Hardkeith.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay. Kibler. Kurtz.
Here.
Langenheim.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
McGuire. Michaels.
Here.
Mitchell. Petrie.
Here.
Quisenberry.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
Rosales. Schrader. Schwartz.
Here.
Kurtz. Alex.
Here.
Berksen.
Here.
Carter.
We have a quorum? All right, thank you. There comes John. The minutes of October 14th are not ready, so we'll pass those and move to the approval of the agenda and addenda. May I please have a motion? Aaron first, Lorraine second. Any changes or discussion on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public participation. First up, Mr. James Kilgore.
Good evening. I'm here to speak in support of the reentry program that the county has been running for the last, for the last eight months or so. I think it's, as many of you know, I participated in the Community Justice Task Force that kind of conceptualized the program, and I even participated in another team that had an idea of running the program, but the program went to community elements. And I think Community Elements has done a really, really excellent job in implementing this program, doing what they were tasked to do. In the short period of time that they've been working on this, they've managed to set up a very broad reentry council that includes all the important stakeholders in the criminal justice system. They've employed staff. They've been able to screen a number of people coming out of the jail. They've set up a program for people to go through. I know that their staff have even been going out into the jails and talking to people, into the community, and talking to people. And I think they've done everything that could have been expected from them in eight months. Now, if people are clamoring for results, that is for personal transformation from a reentry program after eight months, concrete transformation of human beings, eight months is not it. And that's like trying to grow a fruit tree and expecting to grow, to pick fruit after eight months. And so to in any way shortchange the reentry program at this stage would be a big mistake. It would be like cutting that fruit tree off after eight months and then bemoaning the fact that you never got any apples. So I hope you'll continue to support the reentry program, and if the public safety tax revenues should increase, I think you should also consider giving them support. They have been actively seeking support beyond the County Board, and I know they'll continue to do so, so I hope you'll commend them for a job well done and continue to give them the financial support they need to do effective work in the community. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to do something a little unusual here tonight in public participation. We have two back-to-back.
No.
Isn't this it?
No, not today. Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it now. Just move on. Okay. We're not going to worry about that unusual public participation. Timothy Odom.
Good afternoon. I'd like to, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the pamphlet that's been put out as far as community elements and Francis Nelson, Prairie Center, a couple other links. That's where it was brought to my attention. I have seen it in the legal system somewhat in Champaign County. I was incarcerated here in this jail for 74 days. I was released, and I didn't get no services whatsoever, I believe, through Community Elements. On top of it, I'm banned from the Times Center and getting services from Community Elements. Now, I am a citizen of Champaign County. I did spend 74 days in this jail. Now, I'm not going to put it all on Community Elements. It ain't all their fault. I believe CHC has quite a bit to bear on this guilt as well. I don't believe that they do what they're paid to do by the people of Champaign County. And that's a sad situation. You know, don't come down to eight months, don't come down to three days. Comes down to, you know, people are human, they need assistance, and, you know, I'm homeless. Now, I've been on the phone all day, talking to everybody that I could with Community Elements. You know, I've got very little response to this. So what, I'm supposed to sleep out in this weather that we're having? You know, I know the beginning of winter's 21st of next month, but we've had some rough weather here. You know, I wasn't aware that Community Elements was going to be here tonight and was asking for what they're asking for. Now, I've got their contracts here, and I've looked some of their contracts over, and I don't see where it cuts, you know, what it needs to be that they're doing. Looks pretty loose to me, like it leaves it in their hands of doing what they want to do. You know, I've got no issue with them getting the money, but at the same time, how can they ban somebody from getting services, especially that's coming through the county? That's not fair, that's not right, especially a person that's disabled. I can back this up, and on top of it, I've got some mental issues. I'm not perfect. That's their purpose, and that's what they claim to do, help people with disabilities and with mental issues. If everybody was perfect, they wouldn't have this job, they wouldn't be doing what they're doing. That's all I've got to say. I thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time.
Ifad Haug.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ifad Haug. I live in Champaign. I'm here on behalf of Planners Network to present a demographic analysis of the jail population. So this is the monthly breakdown of the population from January to September this year. The average monthly jail population is 547 inmates, and this is the population breakdown by race. We have 44% whites and 53% blacks. While blacks were more likely to be brought into custody compared to whites, they were also more likely to remain in custody. Whites were significantly more likely to have more charges filed, but blacks were significantly more likely to face a more serious charge and stay in jail longer. Pre-trial detention was significantly greater for blacks. This is all in the ILPP report that you probably know already. So the country's, so the county's African-American community has been attempting to raise questions about the racial disparities in the inmate population, which is one question we have to address. Also, the county right now, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, has 12.8% of African-American population, but when you look at the jail population data, we have 53% blacks. So there is a massive disproportion of, and a racial disparity in the jail population. This is the breakdown by sex, and this is by the length of stay. So a third of all releases occur within 24 hours and most within three days, and arrest decisions did not parallel an offender's risk to public safety or failure to appear in court. What we found is that over half of those held for offenses in 2014 were released in less than a week. 81% were released in a month. So we have the incarceration of low-risk offenders, and if that fund that goes into incarcerating low-risk offenders were not going in that direction, we could find perhaps other ways to, for that fund to be spent, so that it would cause a very large net savings. This is the offense type and classification. We created this table based on FBI classification and Illinois State Police classification. I think you will have access to this PowerPoint, but if you also have more questions about this table, you can contact us. This is the holding offense distribution. Most of them inmates are minimum and medium risk, 40% arise from disorderly conduct. So a huge number of nonviolent offenses. This is another breakdown. According to the progress update that came from the Sheriff's Operations Master Plan, 2% had pending traffic charges, but in our analysis, we found that traffic-related holding offenses in 2014 make up 23% of the total. Total inmates who were prescribed psychotropic medications in 2014 are, have been, are 69, and this is less than 1.5% of the entire average daily jail population. In the Sheriff's Progress Report, the number was at 9%, that was assigned special housing status. So again, a question ought to be raised about why, why are we not focusing on building community-based mental health care programs when we have less than 1.5% of entire average daily jail population taking psychotropic medications? This is by ethnicity, and that's all the information I have for you this evening. Thank you for listening, and if you have more questions, please contact any of us there. Thank you.
Natalie Prochaska.
Hi, thanks. I'm going to stand. We just did that in case we didn't get through the presentation.
Thank you. Mike Martin.
I'm Mike Martin with the Atkins Group. Our office is in Urbana, and I'm here to speak very briefly about the enterprise zone that's before you and let you know that our office is in favor. Hope that you are as well. We developed Windsor and Philo Road in Urbana, retail development called The Pines and also Myers, as well as residentially Cobble Creek, The Ridge, Stone Creek, The Vista's 1 and 2. And we're really excited about this coming before you, hope that you're in favor, think that it'll do some really good things, and once again, please, thank you.
Matt Langendorf.
I'm Matt Langendorf. I'm the president of the East Central Illinois Building Trades, and I'm also the business manager for the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 149. I appreciate your time tonight for me to share that we are very much in support of the enterprise zone. Local 149's currently is property, property is currently for sale, and the site that we have chosen to move to is in an enterprise zone, and being in an enterprise zone actually made the project possible within our budget. So I would like to share that. We are, we are one business that would be able to build a project because of an enterprise zone. I would also like to point out that projects like Rockwell, FedEx, and Latania are projects that have put an awful lot of Champaign County residents to work because of largely the enterprise zone. So thank you for your time today and your consideration.
Rita McCannon.
Hi, my name is Rita McCannon, and I'm a teacher, but it's always nerve-wracking to be the guy up front, so I'm sorry. And I have a cold. I live on Homer Lake Road, just south of St. Joseph, and Eastern Illini is requesting a special use permit. And I understand that there's growth and more homes being built, and the need for electricity is higher and higher, but I still question why this site? Why did they choose this site? Eastern Illini does not serve St. Joseph, Illinois; Ameren does, so it doesn't need to be located as close to St. Joseph as it is. They, sorry, they serve more of the area to the south and to the east of this area. Homer Lake Road is used to go to Homer Lake. A lot of people bicycle out on this road. They come from Urbana or the U of I, and they bicycle out on Homer Lake Road all the way to the lake, and it's very pretty in the fall. And I would hate to see a substation right there on the corner of Homer Lake Road. I know it doesn't access Homer Lake Road, but it is right there, close enough to it. And also, for personal, I own property nearby, and I just don't think they're very pretty, but I have, that's kind of a personal thing. But anyway, I would like for you to seriously consider, is this the best location for a substation for Eastern Illini? I don't know where their place is located right now that they can't improve or upgrade. I don't know where that is. But does it have to be at that spot? I thank you very much for your time.
Mark Insland.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to talk about an arts program that I'm part of that actually touches on the reentry program that is on the agenda for tonight. I'm one of the co-teachers and coordinators of a local alternative education program called School for Designing a Society, and we work on the arts and community activism. And a year ago, last year, we started a collaborative project, theater project, that was addressing the issues of global climate change and racial climate. And we, as we work, we follow the thread wherever it will go, and one of the people who was working in this said, maybe we should make this a children's program. And so we worked on this, and one of the children that got involved in performing the piece that we ultimately wrote learned about a grant from Georgetown University for energy improvements. And so this led to a process whereby Danielle Chenoweth, former Urbana City Council member, and Scott Tess, the sustainability manager for Urbana, got involved in writing a grant for our little play that was supposed to have children empowering adults to make positive changes. And so on Monday, we submitted the second round of this grant, which actually be rather large. And we were, part of the grant proposal was what programs could be generated out of this where people could make energy improvements in their homes. And one of the suggestions we made, considering that racial climate was one of the themes of our performance, was a kind of a green jobs reentry program, which would address the, would be connected to the racial disparities and incarceration that were mentioned in the earlier presentation, and would also connect with helping people and, you know, buildings in the Urbana area to improve their energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions. And so primarily, I'm just saying, this is kind of a heads up, if we get this grant, it could be something that would partner with or somehow augment the reentry program that you all have already helped to fund and Community Elements is implementing. And so this is just a heads up, and I hope that there's a strong program in case we get this grant to, to connect with. Thank you. Oh, and if you want to learn more about the program, you can go to our website, which is designingasociety.net. Thank you.
Ryan Roth.
Good evening. It's always nice to be here and see everybody. My name's Ryan Roth. I'm the Public Policy Director for the Champaign County Chamber of Commerce. I am before you this evening to, in support of the Champaign and Urbana Enterprise Zones. If you look at the Illinois Budget Policy Toolbox published by the Illinois IGPA, Government and Public Affairs Institute, on February 18th, Illinois, the Illinois labor force, they say, has not grown since the recession. Looking at BLS data, Bureau of Labor Statistics data, it seems to point this out. From 2007 to 2009, the local workforce ranged from the mid 1,400, 15,000 to the mid 120,000 range. So far this year, our workforce reached a low of 110,000 in August and about 116,000 in April. Enterprise zones have been shown to work. If you look at the DCEO report from last year, December 13th, or I'm sorry, 2013, their annual report, you will see in Champaign County, over 100, about $1,7.8 million in capital investment was made. There were over 1,500 jobs retained and approximately 22 jobs created. Ernst &amp; Young, which is a consulting firm that looks at property taxes, found that in Illinois, roughly the property taxes paid by businesses, or I'm sorry, the taxes paid by businesses, about 39% are property taxes. The excise tax accounts for 16%, and business-to-business sales tax accounts for approximately 14%. These will all be addressed by the state and local benefits of the enterprise zone, and I ask that you please vote in favor. Thank you for your time.
Carl Hill.
My name's Carl Hill. I'm a developer, South Ridge Subdivision in southeast Urbana. I have Hillshire Construction Realty and Development, and I want to try to persuade any of you who may not want to vote for the enterprise zones to do so, based on several reasons. One of the great benefit that it can be, not just to the city of Urbana, but to the county. We had a tax rebate program starting in 2000 to help the city of Urbana to be on a more level playing field with the city of Champaign regarding single-family and duplex building permits. And after that program was initiated, the first year we doubled, the second year we doubled that, and the third year we almost doubled that. So we were able to see that tax incentives are indeed the best way to get people motivated to, especially to build new construction. And new construction also is a little more expensive now than what it was several years back because we have several codes, standards, policies, and procedures that require us to put more into a home, making it more energy efficient, of course, but also making it more expensive for people to purchase. So this type of a program could be very beneficial to our, our population here in Champaign, Urbana, especially young families trying to start out. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in public participation? All right, seeing none, closing. Public participation for this evening. We move to communications from the board. Are there any communications from the board? Nope. Stan jumped in there.
The Lang, I'm sure we all know about it, but we lost a former County Board member in Steve O'Connor. I'm sure we all read about it. I couldn't make the visitation, but he put his time in for this county, which is very much appreciated. And my last comment is, thank God the elections are over. Evidently, there's nobody fit for office.
Thank you. I do remember Steve in a very wonderful way. Steve was the guy who always had a story, always had a joke, a quick joke, that he would always say, hey, Al, come on over here, I've got something to tell you, and hit you with a joke. The gentleman was a gentleman, a true gentleman and a wonderful man, and we're sorry he's gone. He has a wonderful family, and they, he has a great legacy here at the County Board and in the community. Gary.
I'd like to take this opportunity to add to that. Al, Stan and I, I always called him Stan, started out on Interstate 74 at the age of 17 together. And for some reason or another, we stayed together for 54 years or more. And like you say, he always had a good story. Some days I wondered about him, but, and, and I could always tell when he was, when he disagreed with me. He never would say he disagreed with me. He just would not answer me. So those are my little stories, and I think it's appropriate that we do remember Stan here tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, any other communication from the board? All right, let's move on.
You want to come up and introduce yourself and the program?
I'm here actually also in, instead of somebody who is going to be here from NAMI, so I just want to let you all know that. My name is Rachel Storm. I live in Urbana. I've spent the past eight or so years working with numerous nonprofit organizations in the Champaign-Urbana area on issues related to social services, including rape crisis, domestic violence, homelessness, mental health support, and youth advocacy. As, I also work as the Assistant Director of the Women's Resources Center on campus, and I've spent a couple of years volunteering at the Champaign County Jail. I've come to ask the County Board to ask that we, as a community, take a close look at the growth of incarceration nationwide and take steps to not only prevent the unnecessary incarceration of members of our community, but to work proactively countywide to initiate programs that help support people struggling with mental health issues, poverty, substance abuse, and other issues that need supportive services, not incarceration. Today, we experienced one of the first snows of the season, and we're told that we can expect record lows this winter. Having adequate facilities, programs, and things like warming centers ought to be human rights. Instead, unfortunately, we're facing a landscape of increased incarceration. Our detox center in our county has been closed. Homeless shelters are oversubscribed and limited in their scope due to underfunding. Our mental health court was closed over a quarrel between a judge and the state's attorney. Our county lacks a government-run effort to coordinate warming centers to prevent unnecessary deaths during cold winter months of our homeless population. Our social service agencies are being defended, forced to reduce their services or close altogether, and increasingly, local police are asked to be stand-ins for social services and jails to be stand-ins for social service providers. I'm going to show you three videos from Brave New Films that explore how incarceration is increasingly prescribed as a stand-in for mental health services, substance abuse programs, and homelessness reduction programs, at a major cost not only to cities nationwide, but to families not receiving the real support that they need. So I hope that, and I appreciate your attention, I hope that these videos will help not only illustrate this problem, but more importantly, reiterate the necessity for alternatives to incarceration here in Champaign County. Bear with me as we get these videos up. Are you all able to hear this?
No.
Oh, like, oh, okay, that's an idea. That's an idea.
Just another in a recent spike in homeless arrests.
20% arrested this month have been homeless.
You get arrested just because you're homeless.
The typical, long-term, chronic homeless person is being put in jail a lot because of small petty crimes, open containers, trespassing, loitering, all those kinds of things.
Columbia, South Carolina, another city criminalizing homelessness.
Well, where are the homeless people supposed to go?
The homeless end up in the criminal justice system because there hasn't been a better alternative.
I served three and a half years at the Utah State Prison, so I've been homeless a little over a year now. This morning, I had got out of jail, sat down like this. The officer had pulled up on his motorcycle and told me I was going to jail. This was the same officer who had just taken me to jail not even 24 hours ago.
Our homeless need long-term treatment solutions instead of just incarcerations and then put them, put them back in the street.
Just because I don't have a car, I don't have a credit card in my pocket, or change in my pocket, or a home to go to, does not make me a criminal.
We did a survey here, it was about $20,000 per person, per year, on the street because of emergency services costs. Jail time, EMT runs, emergency room visits. And so we realized we were incurring those costs anyway, and there's a much more humane and economic way in order to meet their needs.
You'd be surprised who's homeless. Most people are homeless, they are running away from problems, they are running away from, you know, drug addiction. Got molested when I was a kid, about six years old. Started drinking early, aged 13. I couldn't deal with my problems. I've been homeless for the last 20 years.
About 10% of the homeless population were chronically homeless. A chronic homeless individual that's been homeless a year or more, or four times in three years, a lot of mental health issues, substance abuse issues.
We decided to adopt a housing-first model. Instead of asking people to change their lives before we gave them housing, we chose to give them housing along with the supportive services, and then allow them to change their lives if they wanted to.
We can house them for about $7,800 per person, per year, for case management and rental assistance in a housing unit. 2005, in order to get into housing, you need to be clean, dry, and sober, and if you fell off the wagon, then you lost your housing and case management. Well, we weren't reducing homelessness.
In 1998, we got kicked out because I was using drugs. We went back again, it was like a routine for the last 15 years. I mean, it was hard.
Having a house is the stable base for everything. If you don't have a stable place to live, that's going to be the biggest crisis on your mind every day when you go to bed, whereas when you're in your own home, that whole level of stress is taken away. And now you can focus on everything else that you need to focus on in your life.
But it works, because we've come down 72% from our high in 2005.
Getting my housing here literally saved my life. They arrested me at least 18 times. Ended up at the detox. The police brought me in there. I was pretty sad, I was shaking hard. But Ed moved me in here. I mean, I had towels up there, clean sheets, pots and pans. He brought me a big box full of canned goods. He said, well, anything you need, call me. And I looked around, and I told him, and I said, no, Ed, I got it from here.
We've been able to show that if you house people properly and correctly, is that it takes them out of the judicial system, and the recidivism rate decreases.
It's kind of like a security place for me. I know I've got a place to stay. This is a good feeling.
If I was still the homeless guy, I would have continued on and drank myself to death at this point. It's my first complete 100% sober year. And it's a good start, I feel, you know, not the end of my program, but it's a good start.
The ultimate goal is to eliminate chronic homelessness here in Utah by the year 2015, and the results here prove that that is an achievable goal.
The old approach of emergency shelters and transitional housing has been a failure. Housing first has been accepted nationally. This is the key to ending chronic homelessness.
The Casper Housing Authority is trying out a system they first saw in Salt Lake City. Staff say they've already seen success stories.
Now with the housing first, we're much more successful in getting them housed and out of the criminal justice system and off the street, and help them integrate back into society.
We're actually moving out today. It means a lot to me to have my family back where we can be by ourselves, and it does help you. If you do need to come here, if everyone needs a helping hand here and there.
It is most cost-effective. We can serve more people with the same amount of dollars than if we didn't do this program. But it's also the right thing to do. It just makes sense.
It's one of several police shootings involving people with mental illness.
18-year-old Keith Bydell struggled with schizophrenia. He wasn't violent, and all they wanted was help getting him to treatment. Seconds later, the officer shot and killed him.
They murdered our son for no reason.
Another disturbing video that raises questions about the treatment of the mentally ill behind bars.
He would hear voices.
The extraction team restrained him. Minutes later, the 33-year-old was dead.
Jails are the number-one mental health facilities across the country. They house more mentally ill person versus any hospital, any psych facilities, any, anything. They're patients, not prisoners.
Mental illness is the only disease that, when you're in a crisis, the cops are called. If you're having a heart attack, you don't call the police.
People with mental illness are being criminalized instead of being provided treatment.
These kind of jails and law enforcement, that's public safety. That's where you end up.
There has to be some sort of solution, some sort of help for people who are suffering from mental illness and become involved with the police.
Jeff was the youngest of our four. He was finally diagnosed a paranoid schizophrenic. When he was totally out of control and very frightening, I would have to call the police on him. They didn't know what to do.
I would get calls all the time when I was on patrol for a person who was in a mental health crisis. I had no clue how to handle it. And I would just keep getting the repeat calls every couple of days or every week to the same house, the same person, and I just accepted it, that, ah, this person's just going to be a repeat caller.
We decided very early on that we needed to address folks that were nonviolent misdemeanor offenders that were truly being put in jail because of their illness. We knew that it was law enforcement that were first responders, and that they would be the ones that would be in contact with individuals in crisis.
So we decided what we would do first is train law enforcement officers into 40-hour crisis intervention training. So they're trained to recognize mental illness. When they come up on somebody that's got some strange behavior, they're not using their command voice and the command presence like they're taught in the academy. They realize right away that this person has a problem. We brought together a bunch of law enforcement officers from the sheriff and the San Antonio Police Department, and every one of them didn't want to be there. I heard things like, I'm a cop, I'm not a social worker, I don't believe in these hug-a-thug programs, and this is a bunch of BS.
Before I went through the 40-hour CIT training myself, I didn't have the resources on how to handle mental illness. Well, now, it's way different. You know, I have confidence that when I go into someone's home, if they are experiencing some type of, you know, mental health crisis, that I can get them to the right facility, and then I may never hear from them again.
I'm a mother, I'm a sister, I'm a friend, I'm a voter, I'm a volunteer, I'm all these people. I contribute to my community, and I have a mental illness. My diagnosis is major depression with psychotic features, dissociative identity disorder, and panic disorders. I've done the presentations to CIT training. I tell them, I want to be treated the way you want your mother to be treated if she was ever diagnosed with a mental illness. I'm in a crisis, you know, I'm having a crisis, and I don't, I don't understand what's going on around me.
In incidents with people who have mental health issues, it's unfortunate to see the ones that result in the use of deadly force, where an officer didn't have CIT training and possibly armed with that kind of information, that kind of training, outcomes may have been different.
I never knew, each morning when I got up, what I might find. He began to talk about a fire in the garage. So I thought, would he, without knowing what he's doing, start a fire? How much danger is he in, and how much danger am I in? So I called the police, and I said, I'm terribly frightened. When they arrived, I introduced them to Jeff, and in this case, they came in plain clothing. They weren't in police uniforms. Now, they could have handcuffed him, I guess, and pulled him out, but they are taught how different that person is that they're dealing with. So they began to talk to Jeff. If they can get the person that's ill to, in their own mind, they're cooperating, it's far less violent, it's better for the patient, and certainly, it's better for our police.
When nonviolent people go to jail with mental illness, they save three or four times longer than a violent offender, but when they get released, if they're not hooked up into treatment, they're going to be right back in. There are so many people in their emergency rooms who shouldn't be there. Previous police chief here has actually kept data on how long his officers are spending in an emergency room, he's waiting for a psych evals and medical merits, eight to 14 hours. He spends $600,000 a year in overtime. Now here at the Restoration Center, the law enforcement officers are in and out within 15 minutes.
What we have here at the Restoration Center is services patients who are in crisis, either walk in or brought in here by CIT. They recognize the patients in crisis. They're not truly suicidal, they don't really want to hurt somebody, they just need help.
There are about 18,000 people a year who are brought mainly by law enforcement officers to this Restoration Center, who used to go to jail or emergency rooms or put back on the street. If you're a taxpayer and really don't know a lot about mental illness, the fact that the public's a lot safer when these people get treated, and the taxpayer saves a ton of money. Over the last five years, we've saved about $50 million in taxpayers' dollars.
We want everyone trained because of the potential daily that someone's going to come across someone who's in crisis. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of how soon.
We've been coming up on six years of existence, and we don't have a use of force on our, on our unit, which means we've never tased anybody, we've never shot anybody, we've never hit anybody with a mask. But patients, talking to them, we get the result we want in the end, and we don't have to force it on them.
You want CIT to respond, because you're going to get the help that you need rather than be sent to jail.
The issues that police officers have with people who have mental illness is not unique to San Antonio. That's all over the country, over the world. So any city that would decide to focus on this, put an emphasis on this, would certainly benefit from it.
I no longer thought, what if they have to shoot Jeff?
We save money, we improve public safety, and people can get functional again. I mean, why wouldn't you do this? It's really a no-brainer.
I got arrested about 34 times through the drugs, over and over again, over and over, over again.
I was arrested 14 times for being under the influence of a narcotic. And no one say, this is his 14th time through here, Your Honor, for the same charge. He needs help. What if we tried something different?
I've been arrested so many different times.
I've had a couple of possession charges, I've had a couple prostitution charges, I've had a ton of probation violations. I really can't even remember what the first thing I got arrested for.
Urban drug addiction has been with us for as long as we've had cities, and so many major social problems come to the criminal justice system to be fixed because there isn't something else out there. But don't ask the criminal justice system to do it all, because the only thing we really know how to do is send people to prison.
So eventually, I started living in a tent, and this is kind of my old home. This is what it looks like back here. It was an endless cycle. It was between tent and jail for like seven years. I've probably been booked in and out of King County Jail like 50 times. It hurt to lay down, it hurt to stand up. It was really excruciating. I came to Seattle, I wanted to buy a large amount of OxyContin's. They weren't readily available, and everybody kept offering me heroin. I turned it down for four days. Finally, I was so sick, I was puking, I had diarrhea, I was shaking, I felt like I was going to die. So finally, I caved in, and I did heroin. My addiction got out of hand, and three or four days turned into like nine years.
Belltown kind of runs between First Avenue and Fourth Avenue. Almost every other night on the news, there was this like constant arrests happening.
It goes on in the open for everyone to see.
Two days ago, we saw probably 40 dealers.
Drug addiction in Belltown is rampant. Police published this photo to show how many they collected in just one week.
Few times I honestly tried to just kick on my own, but I got so sick, I was to the point where it was either I have to be on methadone and quit, or I'm going to die. I asked to speak to the sergeant. I told him, nobody's ever given me a chance before. So I'm sitting in this cell, and I'm already getting sick, and he comes back and he tells me, for your own good, I hope that you make it to that methadone point, Rick. There's one thing you have to do for me first, is you have to talk to these people from this new program called the LEAD program, and then you're free, you can leave. I'd never been given a chance before.
The approach that we had over the last 35 years or so of just arresting and putting people in prison for having serious addictions, well, we all know intellectually that's not the answer. We finally sat down and said, well, what we really want to do is have another option for the officer on the street, something other than taking him up to jail. What if instead, you could take him right to a treatment program?
One reason it works is it costs the taxpayers a lot more money for them to be on the streets. It costs a lot more money for police, it costs a lot more money for hospital visits. In the end, it's the humane, financial, smart thing to do.
And that's what the LEAD program does. It provides both the relief to the neighborhood, the police will come and respond to open-air drug violence, but it also can provide relief and hope to people who have had long-term addiction.
Long-term addiction literally changes the chemical makeup of your brain and makes it impossible for you to be anything but an addict. I had everything that I would possibly want, a beautiful wife, two great kids. At one time, I was making up to $185,000 a year. I just loved, I loved heroin, I loved that feeling. The good times don't last. I've seen tons and tons of people get arrested for it. And I've been stopped and caught with drugs on me a number of times. Personally, I've seen five people overdose and die. I know about 15. The last partner I worked with overdosed and died in front of me. It was almost like, this is my last chance. I can either wake up the next morning and go into treatment, or I can come back here. Officer Willoughby, he actually said, have I had enough? I answered him in affirmative, and he was like, well, let's see what we can do.
Drug use and abuse should primarily be treated as a public health issue. LEAD is a harm reduction program, and if they do choose to be in the LEAD program, they will receive individualized case services, whether it be substance abuse treatment, or housing, or job training, with an understanding that breaking addiction, which can, you know, last for decades, is not going to be an overnight process. So it's really about meeting the client where they are at, and trying to help with their basic needs first, and then trying to work on substance abuse treatment.
It wasn't government telling this person, this is what you need. It wasn't government telling this person, "This is what you need." It was the person who'd been struggling with addiction saying, "This is what I need to get back on my feet." And through the skillful help of the case managers, we're able to customize a way out for so many people.
Most of the services in this city, you get like one shot. They give you all these services, they try to help you, and you test dirty? You're fucked. They will drop you. You know, I've relapsed, so I didn't call them or even go to the LEAD office for like two weeks. And when I walked in, my caseworker, just was like, "Where have you been?" And I remember this very clearly, he said, "So what, what's next? What do we do next?" I think I actually cried. For the first time in over like five years, did not feel like somebody had given up on me.
I've been working with Brad just about a year now. And so wherever he's at, I'll be there. And I always tell my clients that, like, whether you're doing great, whether you're not doing great, we're going to continue to work together. What makes us different is that, you know, we have a relationship with them. You know, actually hear their story, because a lot of our clients, you know, people don't really care about their story. And so respecting them and giving them dignity increases the likelihood of change.
We can use the power of the law. Not as a blunt instrument, but as a way to nudge people toward an outcome that is better for them, that's better for the community.
My life now is amazing. I have been clean for like a year and a half. I'm going to college. I wake up in a house. It's not a tent anymore.
61 days ago, I was homeless, a full-on in my addiction. And today, I go to meetings, I'm clean, and I've been through a treatment program. And none of that would have happened without LEAD. Couple of our detectives that have been working the Belltown area for a long time, they were just saying how now, it is like 90% different as far as like very few people out compared to what it was two, three, four years ago before LEAD.
The LEAD program is now expanding from Belltown throughout the downtown core and into Chinatown. We have a lot of people in need. So we have the resources now to go out and individually work with them.
It's also been operating in Skyway and has now been replicated in Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Do you want the same old, same old with the same results? Or do you want something that works?
It's working here in Seattle, like it could work anywhere. We're happy to be the example that shows that harm reduction, working hand-in-hand with law enforcement, can take us into a new approach to drug crimes. And I think our nation desperately needs that.
I want to thank you guys for your time and attention. I know it's kind of challenging to watch three videos in a row and not feel tired or exhausted by them. But one of the things that I think all three of these videos present is that not only do alternatives to incarceration exist, but they are possible. They have been successful in other cities, and they could be successful here in Champaign-Urbana. And so I hope that we can look for ways to creatively invest in alternatives to incarceration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Unfortunately, some of those cities got great big government grants, federal grants, in order to put these programs into effect. We have started on a number of these programs without a nice big government grant. And of course, our people are always looking for government grants. But the C I T and so on have really taken over. The policemen are really behind this 100%. But we need a drop-off place, we need a detox center, we need public housing. We're not going to get the LEAD money so that we can save all that jail money. We have to come up with the LEAD money. And we're trying. And I hope we can keep going in this direction. Bruce, are you doing the reentry?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Bruce Barnard. I'm a consultant working for Community Elements on reentry issues. This is Celeste Blodgett, who's a supervisor working in the program. I want to thank you for taking a few minutes to hear our report tonight about the progress that we're making. And also, thank you for your support for community reentry. In one capacity or another, for more decades than I would care to admit, I have been working on community reentry and the Criminal Justice Services. And I am keenly aware of the fact that reentry involves citizens of our community coming home. And that not everyone will be successful, I know that. But to the extent that we have an infrastructure that can support a positive reentry and a commitment to change, that we can allow our citizens to return home and be productive members of society. You asked us to do a number of things in our contract, reentry contract. One of the most important was to develop a reentry council. And in the report that I've given you tonight, and I apologize for not having that to you in time to have it in your read-ahead packet, I've detailed who the members of the committee are, and some of the tasks that we've looked at in terms of task groups and different services that would be involved in a comprehensive reentry program. So I'm going to go over those briefly and talk to you a little bit about the statistics. And you also have some statistical breakdown of the actual services that we've been providing. One of the things that I was able to do because of some contacts that I had is to actually do some focus groups in Danville Correctional Center with prisoners about what their needs were. And that was very informative, and I reported on that to the reentry council. And what we have found since, and in looking at the needs identified by the people that we've identified in the jail, and also been working with who have come home from parole, it would be no great surprise to you, I'm sure, to hear that the two things they're most concerned about is a stable place to live and a job. So the focus of our reentry initiative is to kind of focus on those areas, and also the linkages that we have to other community services that people may need. So in some cases, there's good infrastructure. We have a very good educational infrastructure in this community. And so our purpose there is to build linkages to ensure that the needs of the reentry population are being met. We have, in terms of the services, we identified a target population through the reentry council. We have our case manager who is working out of the jail. And to identify people who have completed a sentence and are eligible for the reentry program. Community Elements has other criminal justice programs that are operating in the jail. So we wanted to clearly define what was reentry and what was criminal justice funded through another grant. We have developed flyers that detailed local resources that are available to the reentry population. We give those at the jail, we give those to parole officers, to give to inmates. One of the things that we have seen is that the population of the number of people from parole that we're serving as opposed to the number of people from the county jail is gradually increasing. It took us a while to get parole onboard. I think they're very happy with the program now and are actively referring people to the program. One of the key things that we have been able to accomplish is to identify best practices nationwide, and to develop a catalog of literature that supports that. Astrid mentioned the need for grants. And in order to be successful at some of these Department of Justice grants, what you need to be able to do is to have very good data about your local area, and also understand what is out there in the literature in terms of what's successful and what works. And you need to be able to match the two. So we've been working very hard with the county in terms of getting the data that we need to measure recidivism so that we can measure recidivism county-wide, and also so that we can measure recidivism with the population that we're serving, so that we can show that the services that we're providing have an effect. I want to highlight for you just a few things that we've identified that we feel is really necessary for a successful reentry program. And one of those is, we really need the capacity to contact people who are incarcerated in DOC several months before they return to our community to begin the process of talking to them about what they're going to need, what opportunities they have, what support systems they have. That's a capacity that we do not yet have. We need the ability to measure recidivism from the state database just for Champaign County, and that's something that we're actively working on right now. We're proposing some method of assessing level of risk for recidivism so that we can match services to the level of risk. We need to work on our information sharing, and the reentry council is a big part of that. And the data work that we are doing to try to accurately measure recidivism. But we need all of the partners in our community who are working on reentry to be communicating and have that information fluid and flowing. As I mentioned, a lot of the things that we're trying to do is to link to existing community resources. But one that does not exist is any kind of a peer support. And that's something that one of our reentry council members, Marlon Mitchell, has been working on very actively. And we see that as an absolute key to having a comprehensive reentry program, is to have a peer support. So we're working very closely with Marlon and the community stakeholders that he's worked with to try and build that peer support. We think that's a very cost-effective way to provide meaningful services to a lot of people. We want to continue to build our client services infrastructure. And as we complete this planning process, which is starting to wrap up with the reentry council, then we can begin to shift more resources. And the timing actually is working out just about right. We can begin to shift more resources to service provision as opposed to some of the administration and getting the agreements in place and getting things set up, some of the more administrative functions. So as we move forward, and hopefully with your continuing support, we will be able to continue to build on our capacity to provide case management services to link, to identify people who are requesting services. One of the decisions we made early on was to be voluntary program. So our hope, our intent, is that if people request our services, that we will have the capacity to provide those services. If you look at the statistics real briefly or at the bottom of that report, we've had contact with, since the beginning of the grant, we've had contact with 107 people and have completed 85 screenings. The difference between those numbers is just people who, after we explained the program to them and what we were able to do, chose not to continue with the screening. Of those screenings, we have 19 now who are active or pending, who are receiving case management services. And there's been three successful discharges. Of those successful discharges, their immediate goals were met, what they identified as the goals that they brought and requested us to help them with. But if they have another need, they certainly can contact us and services can begin immediately. At this point, we are not at capacity for our case management services. But we're getting fairly close to what a case manager can expect to do in terms of active cases. If you look at kind of the demographic breakdown, the population that we're serving, the big surprise to me is the population we are serving is much older than I thought. And statistically, much older than the population in the jail or in DOC. A slightly higher percentage of African-Americans than what we are currently seeing in the jail. And gender is pretty much about the breakdown of the county or in DOC. I have a whole lot more information about all these initiatives and what is working across the country, but I want to be respectful of your time. And but as Jim and Astrid can tell you, I am more than happy to share probably more information than you would want. So if any of you have, would like any additional information about what is being done, what can be done, or what we perceive our community needs to be, I'd be happy to share that. Yeah, this is more of an administrative question on the demographic sheet. Do you keep track of whether the persons going through this have children or not? We do on the... Their parents? Yes, we would have that data, but I don't think we pulled it for this report. It's more of a curiosity than a concern. Yeah, that would be in, we put everything in the management information system that Community Elements uses, so that would be, that data would be available. We just didn't pull it for the report that we gave you. Chris?
Thank you, I appreciate your being here and I appreciate your efforts. You know, we put a relatively small amount of money into this, and we gave you a deliberately vague mandate. And I think, given that, you've done probably better than anyone would have expected. The reason the mandate was vague, of course, is we don't know how to address a lot of these issues until you're out there trying to do it. As an example, I mean, I know one of the issues of contention early on when we were first talking about writing the RFP for this program was who the population to be served was. You know, you've identified several groups, right? There's people who've been paroled out of DOC, there's people who are on probation, people who have served their sentence and been released, people who were incarcerated but then were released because their case was dismissed or they were acquitted. I mean, you've got people in the jail for a large number of reasons. And so we don't really know where the most bang for the buck is, so to speak, when those people get out, you know, what is the population we need to help. So over time, I'm expecting that you'll identify, you know, sort of how to prioritize those populations to do the most good.
Absolutely.
I'll remind you and I'll remind the board that this is an investment on the part of the board in an attempt to keep costs down. We'd like to have people who do run and follow the justice system come out and pay taxes and help support the community as opposed to costing us money to have law enforcement officers and correctional officers and jail facilities and so forth to deal with them offending again. So I think this is something that has the potential to save the county money over the long run, and we look forward to seeing how that progresses. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned that the population that you ended up serving was older, but you also mentioned it's a voluntary program. Do you find that there's a reason why older releases tend to use your program more? Is this a self-selection issue?
To be honest, I think it's premature to really draw any conclusions from that because we're talking about a fairly small sample. You know, maybe a year from now, I would be more in a position to speculate about that. But you know, just from a common sense standpoint, it does make a certain amount of sense that older people may just be tired and be looking for, to make a transition, to do something different. But I think it would be premature to really draw any conclusions at this point.
Okay, I appreciate that. You mentioned that one of the things that you needed to develop was the ability to be in contact with inmates who are in DOC
Yes.
significantly in advance of their release.
Yes.
Is the reason why you are not able to do that, is that issues with the policies at DOC? Or is that just a lack of available manpower on your part? What is the hurdle that needs to be overcome there?
I think it's just, and we're actively working on it. So, but I think it is just that infrastructure is not there for them to identify who in that population from that prison is going to be released to this county, you know, two or three months ahead of time.
Okay, so it's just a case of the data not being available from DOC in the form that you would be able to use it?
Yeah.
Okay, this isn't, I couldn't understand whether, I didn't understand whether this was, "You don't have the people to contact those inmates," or "You can't get the information on the inmates."
Well, I mean, we would need to have the capacity to have a case manager to make that contact and to begin to develop that plan. But right now, the issue is really just not having that good... But right now, the, the issue is really just not having that good information from DOC.
Okay, and then finally, since I know other board members have questions, if I could ask you to do one thing, I guess I have two more things. If I could ask you to do one thing, I would say it would be to make sure that you make the board and the public aware of gaps in services in the community. I mean, we've already heard repeatedly, and I think we're all aware that, you know, I hear this more from, from police officers than anybody else, right, that we need a place to take somebody who's, who's, you know, maybe not violent, but needs a place to go, and right now, the only available option, or one of the few available options, is jail. Obviously, that's a very not cost-effective way to deal, to deal with a lot of people out there with problems. So to the extent that you can identify and help reinforce the need for those, for, you know, certain services in the community, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
I guess, one, one last question, going back to the gentleman who spoke earlier during public participation. I think one of the reasons that Community Elements was chosen for this contract was obviously we recognized that you, as an organization, have experience and infrastructure in the community because you've provided services to similar populations already and continue to do so. But I do realize that means that you have history with some of the individuals who you're expected to serve. And so I guess my question is, you know, we know from hearing from law enforcement officers, hearing from, from inmates, that once you're banned from the Time Center, once you're banned from Community Elements, once you're banned from those few organizations of the community that are able to, to help, does that essentially mean that you're going to be ineligible to be assisted by Community Elements in the reentry program? In other words, are we sort of, by choosing Community Elements, are we sort of excluding people from participation in the reentry program because they had negative experiences with Community Elements before the reentry program began, or do they, you know, can they get a new deal as part of being in the reentry program?
Couple of things. One is that, that any restrictions that exist to, you know, to Time Center or any services would not affect someone's eligibility to participate in the reentry program. There are, there's also an ombuds person who is available to help someone work through that, whatever that issue is, to attempt to restore their eligibility for services. But that's separate from, it would not exclude anyone's participation in the reentry program.
So Community Elements doesn't have a, a no-fly list essentially that says, you're not going to get services from us?
Those decisions are made programmatically based on the needs of that program, and, yeah, right, exactly.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Stan?
In some of the video, we saw that the main focus point I got was that mostly these folks were looking for decent housing, affordable housing, along with some sort of a job. So when I'm looking over your schedule here, I see all these nice little numbers and package and statistics, but I would like to know, have you got a network set up to provide that housing, and have you got a network of people already willing to offer folks jobs? Because if you do, we might need to band together and do something, because I know a lot of folks looking for work.
The vocational is a bit of a challenge, you know, in terms of jobs. I actually have, in the past, been very successful in linking formerly incarcerated people with employers, but that was in a little bit different economy. In terms of the housing, we are looking right now at a housing program, possibilities through the supportive housing program that would allow us to build or actually purchase some housing at fair market rent that, that we could then lease to this population as well as others who are homeless. It would, it would require homelessness, but we're actively looking to build that infrastructure. I mean, I'll be the first one to tell you if you could do, and I think the video is right, if you can only do one thing for someone, provide them with a stable place to live. So that's something that, that we are actively working on. I think that vocational, there are some things that can be done, and I, and I note in the, the services that are requested, education is zero, which tells me that what people are asking us for is a job, but really what they may need is some specific vocational education to develop a skill, so I think that number will change as, as we engage these people in case management. I hope that answers your question.
Well, it does sort of, but-
Okay.
-I guess I'm going back, we, we realize you're doing, and you're talking to these people, you're screening these people, but what services have you been able to offer?
Are they actually getting?
Yeah, what are they, you know?
Okay, so primarily what they're getting is linkage to other services, so linkage to, say, Parkland College in terms of adult GED services or, you know, skill-based services, linkage to mental health counseling, to substance abuse counseling, someone to brainstorm with on short-term problem solving. I wish we had more, better access to housing. The housing authority here limits and does not allow for people with felonies for five years, which creates a bit of an issue there. And that's why we're kind of actively pursuing that in terms of trying to build out some of our own infrastructure. The primarily in terms of case management, what they're getting is a contact person who knows the community resources, can help them to clarify what their specific needs are and access services to address those needs. Once we have a better peer support model and community support model, there'll be another layer to that to support to, and I am very hopeful, I think Marlon's in the back of the room, I can pin him down, but I'm very hopeful that we'll have that pretty soon.
Okay, and just sort of a comment here, these are some of the things I've heard for years, you know, about pinpointing down, and when you say linkage, to me, if I come to you, I'm going to expect you to sort of hold my hand and walk me to some of them places, telling me where they're at aren't going to do me much good, because as soon as I'm at that door, I'm probably going to hit the first bar to the right. But I also think with all the, the things we have in this community, Time Center, Woman's Shelter, and the list goes on. I mean, there's just a list.
Yep.
Somehow, what I was envisioning here, that all these would come together, because there's going to be female prisoners, female people coming out of DOC, and you're right, that's going to be a hard thing, because just because they're from Champaign, they may not come back here.
Mm-hmm.
But I hear this all the time, and, and I always want to see what we're getting for our buck instead of buildings and administration. I want to see that person that has a problem get the help they need instead of, well, here's a piece of paper, let's fill it out, let us analyze what you've said, and we'll put you in this little module here, and we'll make a few phone calls. That sounds good, and the statistics are good, but we're really not helping people, if, if I'm sort of getting across to you. So I think, I hear what you're saying, but I think with all the resources already out here, that this thing should just be working as smooth as a clock. I mean, we've had this other group that got millions of dollars through mental health, was supposed to be putting a clearinghouse together, and I keep hearing this, but it's like we keep reinventing that will, and taxpayers are paying for it. And they want the best bang for their buck, and sometimes I get mad when I keep hearing how much we're saving by not putting people in jail, which I'm against, but how much we're saving, but then we're spending it elsewhere. So in a sense, in my mind, I'm thinking, well, we may have saved it here, but now we've just reallocated it over here, and the person paying the bills is getting no relief. So that's just my general comment, but I think you're on the right track. I just think that you guys need to get together, all of you, sit down and pool your resources together, and I think that gentleman that spoke earlier, you know, the way I look at life, there's rules everywhere, if you can't abide by them, that's the way it breaks.
Thank you.
Jeff?
It's always hard to follow Stan James, in a way. So one of the big things that I like to focus on with any program, whether it's something I've done or somebody else is doing, is, is the overall goal and metrics, and what is the definition of success.
Okay.
So the group has come together, you have a very stellar group of people on this committee. With that said, what I don't see in this report is, based upon the fact we've been, we've had this for roughly eight to nine months, we're just getting ourselves built up, and we've had 107 contacts. Where does the group think that success will look like in a year or even six more months? Where do you want to go with this in more of hard, concrete facts, like numbers? So for example, you've, you've mentioned that we have 107 contacts so far, you've had three successful discharges. First of all, what does successful discharge mean? What is a good metric, where do you want to go? Is 3% , three out of 107 considered a good number? Is it really low, is it really high? Can you give us some, some thoughts as to where you want to go in the next six to 12 months, and what does success look like?
Sure. Well, first of all, the, the primary metric is recidivism as defined by a new judgment within three years of release. So our, what we're looking for is for recidivism amongst the population that receives reentry services to be lower than a comparison group, which we're going to draw out of the county's database. So we would expect to see a reduction in recidivism. That's the primary metric. There are other metrics in terms of user-defined goals, which is what, you know, you asked, how do you define a success in terms of a successful discharge? A successful discharge is when the goals that the person brought to that service were met, and they feel like they've gotten what they came for. Now, as I said, you know, they can certainly come back, but, you know, we, we, in more time, can look at recidivism as compared to, you know, statewide, as compared to the national recidivism rate. But that's, that's the primary metric that we're looking for. There'll be a, a number of other data that'll be available to us in terms of what services people receive, how many services, how much that costs, you know, that, that kind of thing, but I hope that answers your question.
It does partially in the sense that it gives me guidance as to, at a high level, what the uber goal is for recidivism, and well understood, and it'll probably take us a little bit more than three years to understand if we've met that success, because we have to wait for three years by the inherent underlying rule that we have to wait three years. That said, you mentioned earlier that 107 is just too small of a sample size. Where do you want to be, you, you thought that maybe you could come up with a better idea per Mr. Alex's questions in a year from now. How many, how many contacts do you think it would, you would like to get to, how many successful discharges?
Well, okay, so we're looking at, at approximately 25% engagement rate. As the program builds out more infrastructure and has more things available, such as, as the peer support, such as a housing component, if we're successful in doing that, I would expect that engagement rate to increase. So I would be looking over time for the, the engagement rate to be a higher percentage of, of the overall contacts. I would also hope that the contacts would increase dramatically and come as close as possible, which, which we can measure, to 100% of the people who are completing a judgment at the county jail or are returning to this community on parole. I would like to at least have a screening contact with 100%. We're not there now, but I think we can get there, and I think we can get there sometime next year. But the, the engagement rate requires having services that people want, and so to the extent that we can build that out, then that engagement rate can increase.
Nancy?
Hi, thanks for being here this evening, and thank you for answering the various questions that have been posed to you. I have two.
Okay.
The first one is, we're about to approve the 2015 budget, and within that budget is another $100,000 for the reentry program. I would like to hear you describe how you all plan to put that $100,000 to work. And then my second question has to do with the second important item besides housing is a job. And how much is RPC, which is sort of the important job center for this community, being integrated into that aspect of these things that you've identified as important? Thanks.
RPC was part of the federal grant that was written and was providing the vocational support. As those grants cycle through again, I have every expectation that we will request that grant again. Based on the feedback that we received, I think, you know, we can increase our chances to receive it. We have, we are developing relationships with WorkNet in terms of, so that we can tap into their existing services without additional funding. And the peer support can also link to that in terms of providing support assistance for job retention skills, job-seeking skills, that kind of thing. So I see those two things tying together very closely, the vocational supports that regional planning can provide, and the peer supports. I think that going into next year, I would expect that we would be spending more of the, I don't, the staffing level is going to basically, that's where the majority of the funds are going, is to support staffing, but that the percentage of time spent in direct service would increase as the population increases, as the caseload increases, and because we have completed a large share of the planning and, and needs assessment and that kind of thing. Okay?
Any other questions?
Not a question. I guess you haven't kind of explained what happens when someone walks in the door, and when everybody keeps asking you, and you say what it's needs-based or what the person wants. And that may confuse people, because I think everybody expects, well, you, if someone has a mental issue or alcohol problem, they want to fix themselves, they want it, want something done, you know? And people don't always want things. If you can get them to want something, and they'll accept the help, then, and you provide it, maybe they'll get through the program. But can you explain really what happens with a caseworker?
Okay. So essentially, let's, let's take the county jail, okay? So we work very closely with the sheriff's staff, so they will alert us to the fact that there is someone in the jail now who is going to be completing a sentence and be released. We make contact with that individual, or they arrange for us to have contact with that individual, to explain to them that we are a case manager working on reentry services, that we would like to talk to them about what services we have to offer, and identify what it is that they would like to receive, and see if we can provide some assistance. Now, you know, not to get too deeply into the weeds, but you pointed out that people don't always recognize what they need, so we use a process called motivational interviewing, which helps us to engage the individual and move them towards the point where they are ready to make some changes and have some commitment to that change. But the screening process looks at, you know, what, what supports you have in the community, what family supports you have, what, what your plan is for vocational, your education, and then, on a case-by-case basis, link that person to community resources and work with them to ensure that they have the motivation, that they have the ability to, you know, get to regional planning, to talk to them about vocational services or, or whatever that plan is.
Just so you could explain it, people discuss the issue of mental, mental illness and what happens with a police officer, whether they take them to jail or not take them to jail. And there actually is a service, a respite center at Time Center. Can you explain that?
So the respite center is a 24-hour psychiatric support center that is intended to provide services for someone who may otherwise end up being admitted to a psychiatric hospital, but does not need that level of services. So a- So a, they can be referred there by a psychiatrist, they can come to the emergency room and be referred to the respite center, but we can provide residential services, medication stabilization, working with the case manager. That's one of the services that Community Elements provides. And also, we provide the crisis service with the crisis clinicians, which do the mental health assessments in the emergency room. And, and one of the things that, that I failed to mention is that with the changes in the healthcare system, one of the things that we've been doing in the jail is to work to get benefits case managers in there to make sure that people are enrolled in, in health services and are getting their primary and their behavioral healthcare needs met.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Do I hear a motion to accept the next six reports?
So moved.
Any discussion? And are all in favor of accepting them and filing them?
Aye.
Any opposed? No other business or changes?
Thank you, Astrid. Appreciate it. Let's go to finance. I'm sorry, Stan, yes?
What about the monthly reports? Don't we get a motion?
We just did that, Stan.
Well, I'll tell you, I can't.
Yeah. Chris?
First item on the finance agenda, which we discussed at length last month, is approval of two requests for participation in enterprise zone applications. We have one from the city of Urbana, we have one from the city of Champaign. Since these are separate issues, we will require separate motions on these. For the purpose of discussion, I'd like to have a motion to send to the full board with a recommendation of approval, the county's participation in the city of Urbana's application for an enterprise zone.
I would so move.
I heard Mr. Quisenberry and Mr. Langenheim. We have a who's who of economic development in the room. I see Libby Tyler, Mike Monson from the city of Urbana, and others. I see a couple of Champaign City Council members back there, Councilmember Finan and Councilmember Foster. We've got Craig Ross from the EDC, so we've got quite a good turnout tonight. So if we have any questions, I expect they will be answered. I guess I would ask the presenters, both from Urbana and Champaign, to please touch on anything that has changed in your application since the presentation that you gave last month. We don't need to repeat the presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Brandon Boyes. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city of Urbana. Thank you again for allowing us to present tonight and for considering participation in the enterprise zones. Since we last spoke, the Urbana Park District has voted to participate in property tax abatements in the Urbana enterprise zone, and CUMTD and Parkland College have both voted to participate in property tax abatements in both the Urbana and Champaign enterprise zones. You can see the other four districts, including the county, that we're in the process of working with. The school district will likely vote next month, actually. I don't think that date is correct, but they'll, they'll take a final vote in December. The proposed enterprise zone is about 9.22 square miles. Of that, about a third of that is slated for or currently zoned as residential use. I'm going to switch over to the map and point out a couple changes to that. First off, at the top of the screen here, the mouse isn't showing up terribly well. But we removed a portion of the zone from where Olympian Drive, since it will not be extended all the way to 45 in the foreseeable future. We felt that that area could be removed. However, we did receive a request from Prairie Foods Farm that their farm be included, and that isn't in this proposed map. We only got confirmation of their interest today, so we would like to include that parcel moving forward because they would have an interest in having retail or commercial uses, possibly processing. Yes. Yeah, it's right about, right about there. It would come to the same, same point. There were a number of analyses maps that we included in the packet as well. The other thing I wanted to point out is that we removed some considerable portions of property in southeastern Urbana as well. We reassessed based on comments from the county board, and we wanted to, while we, we did seek to be as inclusive as possible of, of properties that could potentially develop in this 20-year timeframe, we took a second look and, and weeded out some properties that were less likely to develop. The other consideration that, remaining consideration we have, which we hope to have sorted out in the next couple of days, is Clark Lindsay Village has a few properties that they're in the process of developing, mostly over here on the east end of the property. And we're in touch with them to see if their projects are, are going to fit the qualifications of the zone, and if so, we would, we would seek to add them. But other than that, I, I think we're, we're pretty settled on, on this as the, the proposed area of the zone.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that the green, the, the vertical green rectangle in the southwest corner is Orchard Downs, is that right?
That's correct. Orchard Downs. There is no active redevelopment proposal at this time, but we're proactively including it. It's also in the metro zone between Champaign and Urbana.
And then the, the area within the corporate limits at the north end that looks like a big cross is Frasca Airport, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And this just again is a reminder of, of the abatement structure. One note for Parkland College participation is that they only have chosen to participate in abatements that create jobs. So we believe, although we have yet to work out the details of this, that they would be participating in these two aspects of our program. And similarly, they would, they would be participating in a select number of Champaign's program. And that's all I have for Urbana. I'd be happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Questions from board members? I see Ms. Petrie first, and then Mr. Quisenberry and Ms. Michaels. So, Ms. Petrie.
Hi. Thanks for being here. Since it's not totally easy to read the map, I have a couple of map questions. What is the northern boundary road?
The northern boundary is not a road. It is one parcel north of the proposed extension of Olympian Drive, and it is concurrent with the northern extent of Champaign's proposed zone. Let me show you a detail of that. I'm sorry if the maps were not, we would have to print, print them out very large in order to-
No, I understand.
-have them, but the electronic files, these are actually the electronic files that we disseminated, and they are quite good. They do give a good amount of clarity. So this map shows both Champaign and Urbana's proposed zone. Champaign's is on the left in orange. Then there may be some slight modifications, Champaign's, because this is a little bit older version, but Urbana's is current with the two exceptions I noted earlier. And the yellow boundary is the extraterritorial jurisdiction, so we're well within that on all areas. And the, the pink line is the contiguous urban growth area, or COOGA. And you can see Urbana's area, proposed zone is within the COOGA with the exception of these two areas to the north. And the reason we've suggested that they be included is, is precisely because of the ongoing, the underway extension of Olympian, and this is intended to capture the parcel only to the north of that. And, and we, we would like to also respond to Mr. Gerald's request, which is here again, which is north of the COOGA. But the right-of-way for the project is, is here, to give you a sense of where, where that roadway, of course, it wouldn't fill that whole area, but that's currently city-owned right-of-way. So we are trying to limit to, to that. Is that clear?
Okay. I have a second question. The nine-plus acres, what percentage is open farmland right now?
Very little. Let me look at another map. And the analyses had a breakout of all the land uses. Now, for what is zoned as, as future land use, I don't believe agriculture or even made the list.
I'm not asking what it's zoned for future land use. I'm asking what it's presently being used as.
I don't, I don't have that figure. But I, I would remind the board that the enterprise zone doesn't, doesn't guarantee development. It's a incentive tool, and it is, does not run counter to any of our land use controls or the will of any property owner if they do not wish to use it.
Okay. And then my last question, since I'll confess I didn't go and read the statute. Not all of the areas in the Urbana map are contiguous, but they are in Champaign. Is there anything in the statute that says the areas need to be contiguous?
They, they will be contiguous. We, by statute, can use a three-foot strip to extend, to, to connect those parcels that are outlined, such as Orchard Downs. So for example, for Orchard Downs, there will be a three-foot strip extended along the Windsor Road right-of-way to connect those parcels. So the parcels themselves do not have to be contiguous.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes, before I go into my questions, I'm just eyeballing the map, and it looks to me like it's about, I'd say 25 to 35% of that is currently being farmed, but a large portion of that chunk is owned by Menards, which I don't think in the long term they intend to farm that. I think they intend to build a store some, at some point. I don't know when. I hope it's sooner, sooner rather than later. I, I did want to start out by saying thanks for listening with regard to the map. I think that changes that you've made certainly dealt with the question that I asked when we were here last, and makes a much more reasonable scope to this. I think all of the areas that are included are susceptible to development in the next, in that timeframe. So, and I also want to express my support for this. I intend to, to vote for this, and I hope to also, if this passes, to be able to support the Champaign request as well. But I, I believe as a board, we should either be in this, all in this, or, or not at all. So I encourage you to, I encourage everyone to support both.
Thank you, Mr. Quisenberry. Ms. Michaels, and then we'll go to Mr. Schrader.
Well, Ms. Petrie asked several of my questions, but I, I want to clarify something here, too, when we're talking the northern boundary, because it is dark to see. You said it wasn't really a road. Are we still south of Fort Harris?
Yes.
And, but you're north of Olympia on some of that. There's a large portion up in the northeast side.
Now, let him answer the questions.
Right. So it's north of Olympian, south of Fort Harris?
At Cunningham?
Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, I want to know how far north this goes. Still south of Fort Harris, correct? But just north of Olympia?
This, this, to the left here, you can see, I'm trying to wave my mouse around, that's Olympian, where it'll extend across.
Mm-hmm.
And this is North Lincoln, which sweeps, and this is Prairie Foods Farm here, which is asked to be included.
Keep going east. Keep going east. There. What I'm saying is up by the top of the yellow, that's Fort Harris Road, correct? And Olympia's down underneath the pink line?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right?
Yeah. And these parcels primarily extend north of the, of the growth boundary because they're, they're contiguous parcels.
Right.
That's an important consideration in that some of these outline areas, particularly the, the areas that are being actively farmed and haven't been subdivided, the tracks-
I was just trying to get my boundaries, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely. But the tracks are quite large, and when we select a whole parcel, it really extends much further than beyond what we intended to capture.
That's fine. I was just trying to get my boundaries.
Okay.
My next question is this. Looking, you know, I agree with Mr. Quisenberry. If you're going to do one, you might as well do them both. I mean, it doesn't make sense to do one and not the other. At this point, it looks like Champaign is mostly done infill, and they're outside of their corporate limits by one and a half square mile, according to their information on page 50. Do you know how much is outside of the corporate? Because it looks like Urbana actually has got a lot of this 9.22 outside of the corporate.
This table, which is on two of the maps, shows the breakout of what is in the city, 4.42 miles, and 4.8 is out in the county.
So-
Now, bear in mind, though, that Champaign's district does not intend to capture areas that are developing for residential. So we have an additional land use that, that comprises 30% or so of our proposed zone.
That's fine. I just wanted to know what the difference was on those, because there was a little bit of a difference as far as what they said also, that their proposed map was 8.36, and yet the map that you provided said it was 1032 square miles. So there was a little difference there, and I was just trying to, in my mind, match the numbers up.
I, I, well, we performed that analysis in GIS, so I'm not-
Okay.
I don't understand the discrepancy.
Okay.
Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just don't want to get too far out of line here with planning and zoning discussion, but I, I just want to say from the standpoint of agricultural land potentially being consumed, and once again, this, we're just talking about potential development out here and trying to track it. That, I, I appreciate, especially at Urbana, that they've developed to be contiguous and compact, and have also included the county on any kind of, any kind of development of COOGA. So I, I just want to make that point that, that there may be some agricultural land, but it, it is compact and contiguous, which I think should be part of our policy, too, in the county.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kibler.
Quick question, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question on some of the comments that were made about certain companies or groups that want to be included inside the enterprise zones. It almost comes across as, as, it is not this way. I know it's not favoritism, but it almost comes across as we are going to add people in that are part of, that, that would like to be added. Has that, just to be full, fully open, has that same opportunity been given to all entities inside of Urbana to be able to be part of this zone? And have the wishes been accepted if they wanted to be part of the zone?
Absolutely. I think that the reason that the zone is the size that it is, is because we sought to be broadly inclusive of every parcel that was zoned for these types of uses that we're targeting with the incentives, including those in the county that, that may be more tenuous in the future. You'll note that the two that were discussed tonight are, are really at the boundary of what is comfortable or recognized as appropriate for the, for the boundary of this zone. And that's why these property owners were contacted specifically. And, and we also received some comments at our public hearing for specific parcels in the city that didn't meet the zoning requirement that we set, but the owners made a case that they had control of properties, of, of a few specific properties, that they would make the case to attempt to develop within a 20-year time horizon. So, and we, we certainly have had an open-door policy, and I think we've been at near a dozen public meetings on this, and have never turned anyone down for consideration.
Thank you. Any additional questions with regard to the city of Urbana? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the city of Champaign. Same, same admonition as before. Please confine your comments to changes since the last time you were here.
Well, thank you very much, and I said it last time, and I'll say it again. I want to thank the county for being a 30-year partner with us on our current enterprise zone. We feel it's been very much worth it. We hope to continue. Since the last time we met, not much has changed from our proposal. What you received in your packet was some additional information that hopefully answered some of the questions. I know Ms. Petrie had a question about maps, and we handled that directly with her, and there were some questions about what businesses have benefited from this. So we, we did our best to put together some case studies for you, so you had that in your packet. And then we also included- And then we also included the full list of every single project that has come through the Enterprise Zone program, just in the spirit of complete openness about all of those programs. So, I've got three quick, four quick slides. As Brandon said, we, too, have been going out. Right now, we have onboard the Champagne Park District, Parkland and MTD, as Brandon mentioned, the City of Champagne Township and the City of Champagne will be taking their votes December 2nd, and then the county tonight. The school district has recently informed us that they're going to not participate at this time. Obviously, they have a lot on their plate. That's not to say that we can't bring them on as a partner. That actually is one of the benefits of the new act, is it's a little easier to bring on partners. So, we hope that we can continue to work on them and bring them on. This is the list of the programs. Again, not much has changed. We still have the six proposed programs, which you have in your packet. And then in terms of our map, the map is almost exactly the same. We did have one change that was made. And you know what? That's not being reflected. This was an earlier map, I apologize. At our city council meeting, we had a resident come in from the West Washington Drainage Area and had talked about some of the damage received by the flooding in their neighborhood. We felt that was a really compelling reason to include them, because it would be the only program that could assist them to make significant repairs to their homes. So, we actually added the West Washington watershed to the area. We've been open to others as well, but again, that's the only change that we've made since last time. So, just some of the stats. The discrepancy, that Brandon mentioned, that, I want to double-check that, but I think they're right. I think my number is actually wrong. So, the 10 square miles is correct, but I do know that the one and a half square miles that's outside the city is correct. And the breakdown you see of that one and a half, .21 is residential Wilbur Heights, .37 is already under annexation agreement, and .13 of it is craft by itself. So, aside from those, there's really not a lot of developable land or farmland that's located in the county that would also be in our zone. So, those are the slides I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Obviously, we have some support behind me that could also answer questions if you have some for them.
Thank you. Mr. Quisenberry, beat you by a second, Ms. Petrie, then we'll go to you. Mr. Quisenberry.
Hit the buzzer faster. Quick, just kind of a confirmation thing, the city of Champagne Township and Cunningham Township are governed by the respective councils, so there's little chance of them deciding not to participate. Right? Any further information that you have on why the Champagne School District might choose not to participate in this? I know there's been other cooperative agreements like this in the past that they've chosen to opt out of. I was just curious if you had any more information on that.
I really don't. They, their attorney sent an email two days ago. We haven't had a chance to sit down and talk in person. I know that we were supplying them with every piece of information that they requested, and I know that staff was continuing to speak with them. Obviously, it was also right around the election time. I honestly have no idea where that stands. They just said that at this time, they were not going to pursue it. But like I said, we certainly hope that we can convince them that this is a worthwhile endeavor.
I hope so, too.
Thanks.
Hi.
Hello.
Thanks for the maps you sent to me and to Urbana also. I didn't thank you. Just a clarification question, now that you're telling us West Washington has been included, and I understand the reasoning. However, if I'm understanding the plan for Champagne's, it is not to include housing?
It does have a housing component. We do have a residential, a neighborhood improvement program, that's one of the six.
It's a neighborhood improvement as compared to building new housing development?
New housing can be a part of that. You know, there's the tax abatement already for the improvements on.
Right, which we talked about.
Which we talked about before. This covers new construction as well, so if you wanted to rebuild on one of the infill lots, you could use an enterprise zone program. What we don't include is we don't include large tracts of land that are primed for brand-new subdivision construction.
Okay, that's good clarification for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maguire.
Thank you. I kind of waited for Champagne to come up, and someone else mentioned the planners that were in the room and the people that have kind of guided the city, both cities, as they've grown over the last 20 or 30 years, and I wanted to commend them on the job that they've done. I think planners are cool, as TJ probably knows, and they have to be in Champagne or Urbana with the university and the students, but, including Patsy, of course. And you've done a good job under difficult situations over the last five or six years, when we've had difficult times, but thank you for your work and thank you for the changes we've made for the county board members.
Thank you for those remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Maguire. Any other comments as to the city Champagne's request? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Oh. The county administrator informed me, we need a motion. Would someone like to make a motion? Mr. James and Mr. Kibler. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
All right, we've been at this for two hours. We're going to take a five-minute break and then come back. Thank you. Okay, let's get back to work. Please take your seats. What, my chair? This chair? That chair is empty. Well, I guess we can't start until this chair is full. And is he taking a walk around the property or? Take a little stroll? Does anybody know where Chris is? Thank you, James. He went that away? That away? Okay. Ah, we only have a few left, but I see the guy who's always there, sitting in that same seat, very patient. You've got more patience than Job, I swear. I could not sit like that through this meeting, being on that side of the table. Chris, take off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is a request from the Champagne County Court Appointed Special Advocate Program for a $20 fee to be levied on those convicted of criminal offenses in Champagne County pursuant to 55 ILCS 5/5-101. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Schrader, seconded by Mr. Kurtz to send this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Any discussion? We've had two meetings so far to talk about this, and now we have number three. I see Mr. Maguire, then we'll go to Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes, I'm a little confused about this, because I thought, well, last time we went back and discussed the county board supporting it, and I know that you sent out your minutes that you wanted to go back to this form, and then there was an issue of money, and then I had another question about if there is an issue of money, where? I think we passed a resolution that the county clerk, or county clerk was going to get $140,000, $60,000 from Ameren, and I wondered what happened to that $140,000. I just, I wanted to ask those questions.
Sure, I may defer to the county administrator with regard to Ameren, but this is a request from the CASA program to impose the fee, and we are the ones who they have to come to to ask for the fee. So, we're, to some extent, obligated to vote on the fee. I mean, if we want to talk about other, if someone wants to move other ways to support CASA, then they can do that, but the specific item on the agenda is the fee. So, I think we are sort of obligated to vote as to whether or not we're willing to impose the fee.
There was a lot of discussion, I thought, in the last meeting, though, that people weren't sure they wanted to support the fee, they didn't want to put the fee on the people that were going through the court system, and they wanted to try to change something else, and there was, you know, they were supposed to be taken aback and putting on, and finding a way to put it into the budget and bringing something that was a resolution for the budget, supporting it from the budget, and bringing that type of resolution to support the money that CASA was looking for to support it. And I don't see that here. And Ameren may not be the issue, that the resolution was, that I was talking about for Gordy Hilton, and $160,000, I'm only bringing up Gordy Hilton because he was on the resolution, was a discussion about the high-power, high-voltage lines that are going through the county that came up two or three months ago, that gave us approximately $60,000, and where that, how that money got allocated in the budget, and if it, I don't remember anything being done with it, if that is an opportunity to use this money for this use.
Okay, I'm happy to have a discussion on that, but we do, I mean, your recollection is correct. A number of board members at the last meeting said that they were not supportive of the fee. That doesn't mean we don't have the, that doesn't mean we have the option of not voting on the fee. I mean, we have a request that we have to act on. Based on what happens on the fee, we can certainly look at other ways to support this. I am not aware of a obvious way in the draft budget to accommodate this, and I'm reluctant to do so because we received numerous other budget requests from department heads and elected officials that we turned down. So, if this is something that we want to, in fact, address by modifying the draft budget, or if this is something that we want to look at later in the coming year, potentially as a budget amendment, we can absolutely do that. But my concern on the agenda right now is whether or not we're going to support this fee. I think Mr. Quisenberry was next, and then we'll go to Ms. Burksen.
Yes, and since we're talking about this mostly because of my fault, because I was the person who moved to defer this back to COW. It was because, through our discussion, it was clear to me that while many people around this table are supportive of CASA, there were some, a good number, who were expressing concerns about the fee model of supporting them. And so, because of that, I felt that, since this is the last COW where we would discuss the budget, and some individuals talked about an opportunity to look at supporting it through the budget, this would be the place to bring it back to and discuss either of those items. I assume we can discuss if there's the will on this board to support this through a budget situation. We can talk about that when we talk about the budget. But this is the opportunity to talk about whether we're going to do it through a fee or not. I will add that I am, I've been convinced, both by Mr. Alex's comments and his report to us and through other discussions, that at this time, I don't feel like I will support changing our budget, because a lot of other people asked for money, not just elected officials, but department heads, asked for support that we did not take on. I'm also recalling that there are other potential groups that may want to be funded like this that didn't choose to come at this time. That's maybe neither here nor there, but that's on the horizon. And at this time, you know, there is concern about this Sandusky money and how long it's going to last or not, but right now, we know it's going to last through June, and it may last through the end of next year. And that would, I feel like that would give us the opportunity to look at this in the longer term and whether we want to make this a part of our budget the following year. And if it comes up short sooner, we can always revisit whether we want to apply this fee. That's my understanding, that if come May, we hear that the Sandusky money is going to evaporate in June, we could take an action to consider this fee option again, or look at where things are in the budget, and if we're ahead in some areas or there's revenue that we didn't account for that we could bring to support this, we could do so. This has nothing to do with my interest and my support and my admiration of what CASA does. This has to do with whether that we do this the right way and we do it when we need to. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I saw Mr. Kurtz next.
I'll tell you, if we try to put this into the budget, the line of nonprofits that will go from here to downtown will start tomorrow. All right? Our goal is not to supply money to, from our budget, for the taxpayers to every nonprofit that comes up to us and says, well, we need to jump into your budget and take another 50 or 100,000. We have a balanced budget right now. The staff worked, and we all worked for months on this budget, and now is not the time to try and add something that our elected officials can't have, but that we're giving to a nonprofit. For me, the support of this fee is easy. I see an opportunity to help, expand, or increase the support for the children who are abused in this community with this fee versus those who are convicted of a crime, not just into the court system, but tried and convicted, and I don't care what their financial status is, another $20 to help this organization as a fee, to me, is very worthwhile. And so, I will support the fee tonight and not worry about it coming into our budget next year.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. And I apologize, Ms. Burksen, I even had your name written down and I didn't call on you. Please go ahead.
It's, to me, it's not just $20. Our fees are 700-something to 1,400-something. They are exploitative of poor people, and I don't think we should add 20 more. I think 20 more will hurt. It'll feed a family. And so, I will not support the fee.
Thank you, Ms. Burksen. Ms. Michaels, and then Mr. Langenheim.
Well, as I was looking at the math, I, you know, feel the same as most of you do, that we, it is a good program and it does help the children and things of that nature. What I'm most concerned about is collecting this fee still does not balance them. They're still in the hole. According to the information that I have on page 107, which is their current budget, with their, with the grant money that they have right now, they're $22,000 in the hole, and they're estimated, even if the Penn State money goes away, and then they get the estimated $57,000 from the $20 fee, there's still $15,000 in the hole. So, I don't know if that's going to be enough, or if that's going to be something that maybe we really need to look at, what needs to make that program work? Because if you keep digging out of their monies on hand, you're going to, they're going to have to find something from somewhere else, too. So, I mean, I support the idea, but...
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. Mr. Langenheim.
Thank you. I think I'm ethically wounded by this proposal. People that commit a crime should pay a penalty that's related to that crime. We should not look upon people who have committed a crime as a source of money for things that we're not willing to pay for on our own account.
Thank you, Mr. Langenheim. Any additional discussion, comments, or questions? Ms. Petrie.
I, too, am not going to support this at this point in time, but the message I hope that we do convey is it's open for future discussion down the line.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Maguire.
I guess I'd speak to the issue. Obviously, I would have rather had some resolution that would have brought it out of the budget, so we could discuss that. But there's two issues. One is, I don't know that there's legislation by the state that allows other private organizations to come and ask the county for funds from our general budget. The other one is, we don't necessarily have to fulfill all their budget for CASA. They just want something to help. They're out fundraising for themselves, and most of their budget is being paid for by that fundraising. They're only asking for part of their funding. I don't know if, even if, what we're currently trying to give them with what they have will pay for all the need that they have, and they probably need more. And if these kids aren't the priority of this county, shouldn't be, isn't the highest priority in this county. I don't know who would be, considering that we have the responsibility of the courts of this county.
Mr. James? I'm sorry, if I could jump in. We heard a presentation several months ago from the state's attorney about available fees, and the organizations that were mentioned at that time were CASA, Children's Advocacy Center, and Juvenile Literacy Prevention. So, there are some specific classes of things for which you're allowed by statute to levy court fees, but it's pretty limited. I'm sorry, Mr. James?
Well, my comment is, when I hear about state mandates or because we're allowed to do something, doesn't mean it's always the right thing to do. The state mandates a lot of things and doesn't even fund it, and we're obliged... The state mandates a lot of things and doesn't even fund it, and we're obliged to do it. So that, to me, just because we're allowed to, doesn't mean it's the easy answer and the way to go. We all know that supporting our children is one of the things, but one of the things I've always said on this board, you have to prioritize. We have a lot of people coming to us, reentry program, drug court, so forth and so on. They're all good causes, but we only have X amount of money. And like Astrid said, we're putting it, and LaRouche, we're making people pay for things that they may or may not believe in. You know, we're telling them, here it is. And it used to be we had a choice in that through giving to Rotary or whoever it may be, but now, we're telling people, well, you're going to pay, and you're going to pay whether you like it or not. And I hate opening the door on stuff like this, just like we have with school taxes and everything else, we tack it on to sales tax. It doesn't hurt me, because all my kids are basically grown. But the people that have to pay for it, they're paying for it, and they're local people. So what we got to be mindful of, just because there's a tool there, doesn't mean it's a good tool, and we have to look at other avenues to support these things, or pretty soon, you're going to price a lot of people out of their home, and when we talk about homelessness, I'll be one of them guys out there in the street looking for a handout.
Thank you, Mr. James. I would say all we are obliged to do is vote on their request. Any additional comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Move on to the Treasurer. Would you like to come give us your report, sir?
I think one of the best things I do is clear a room. The only thing that I'll add to my report is that real estate taxation is done for the year. We've had our tax sale, and the final collection number is 99.94. Pretty good. So I'd ask that my report be accepted and placed on file, please.
Moved by Ms. Michaels, seconded by Mr. Hartke. Any additional questions for the Treasurer? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Move on to your mobile home tax sale resolutions. May I have a motion for permanent parcel number 29-50-16 and 20-32-70? Moved by Mr. Jay, seconded by Ms. Card.
Two resolutions, both from mobile homes, very similar. First one is acquired by a person who went to bid in our sealed bid auction. And the second one was where, just before that was going to happen, the taxpayer decided to pay all the back taxes and redeem. So both these are really, put, put the property back in a taxation position, and I'd ask for approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and we will move on to the auditor.
Thank you.
Who is not here? Dan, do you want to stick around for the tax anticipation warrants discussion, then? I may have a motion to accept and place on file the auditor's monthly report, Mr. James and Mr. Esri. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now, might as well go back to the Treasurer here. We have a request from the nursing home, asking us to recommend to the board the issuance of tax anticipation warrants for the Champaign County Nursing Home, as done in prior years. Moved by Mr. Esri, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Kurtz. Please give us anything you think we need to know.
Sure. This will be the seventh year of tax anticipation warrants for the, for the nursing home. Of course, it's based on the fact that they're going to collect real estate taxes, and we pay them, pay the loan back to those proceeds. So I thought about, I think on the 7th of this month, sent out requests for bids to every bank that collects real estate taxes for us, numbers around 29 to 30 banks, something like that. We received four bids, quite a range in, in the number, but the lowest bid was 0.55% from Midland State Bank, which is even considerably lower than the lowest, which, of the six years, which was last year, which was 0.71. So really good deal for the nursing home, and we're going to have $971,120. And it'll extend from the time when we get closed, do the closing on the loan in early December, and will actually mature September 30 of 2015. We pay this loan off every time that we make a real estate distribution, starting in next May. So we reduce the interest even further.
Thank you, Mr. Quisenberry.
I will quickly point out that despite long discussion, every year we pass this, and every year it goes great, so I encourage everyone to support it.
Thank you. Ms. Petrie.
I think I had a brain freeze when you told us how much it was going to cost us in interest.
0.55% is the interest fee?
Yeah, but what do you figure will be the amount on the...
Well, I don't know, because I don't know...
Actually, Dan, I got that. It's $5,341.
I'm sorry, what?
$5,341.
Thank you.
But that would be reduced by paying...
Yes, I understand that. I was just asking for...
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I just wanted a calculation. I apologize.
That's okay.
Is that it, Ms. Petrie?
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the nursing home monthly report. May I have a motion to accept that and place it on file?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Quisenberry. Any discussion? Comments from our nursing home liaisons? Questions to our nursing home liaisons? Ms. Michaels? What?
Are you guys here?
Yeah, Gary and Josh.
Oh, I thought...
Yes, I have.
Sorry, I was looking for somebody out here.
Yeah.
I'll just talk to them.
Thanks, Diane, Mr. Kurtz.
I, I've been under the impression that Mr. Maxwell will not be on the nursing home board in the new board. I wanted, I'm not sure if Josh will be, but I want to thank Gary. It's a tough job, being part of the nursing home board, and, but he's done a yeoman's job. His reports are concise, they're informative, factual, and they're very, very helpful. And I want to thank him for his service on, on the nursing home board of directors.
Thank you. I could only second that. Absolutely. I definitely appreciate the information we've gotten, both from Mr. Maxwell and Mr. Hartke over these two years, that we've been doing these finance updates from the nursing home. So thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Al.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Because the report will be accepted. Okay, we'll move on to budget amendments and transfers. First is Budget Amendment 14-10, an amount of $6,000 within the Circuit Clerk's office to cover monthly costs of court-ordered newspaper ads. May I have a motion to send this to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Mr. James and Ms. Card. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Budget transfer 14-11, this is within the nursing home. Wonder if we should take, no, we'll go ahead and do these individually. $537,000 allocated among the nursing home budget. May I have a motion for approval? Mr. Hartke, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Gima has a memo in the packet, which I won't attempt to summarize, because it's lengthy. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Mr. Hartke, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, this is simply bookkeeping. This is because the nursing home budgets for full staff, when we don't achieve full staff, we have to hire temporary staffing, and this is moving, this, that, and several other things. It's moving money around from one line item to another to cover end-of-period needs. So there is not an increase in any, of revenue in any sort.
Thank you. And Deb, I had a question for you. On a number of these budget transfers, we are moving money from, seem to be moving money from personnel to non-personnel items. I thought that required a budget amendment. Are we doing this properly?
No, it's a county board-approved budget transfer when you move money from one, from personnel to non-personnel expenditures. It's only an amendment if you're actually increasing the overall appropriation.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hartke, for your comments. Mr. McGuire.
Which is an increase in appropriation, because they're having to use more agency nurses as an increased cost for the nursing home, which we have to be concerned with, because they can't keep staff, which is a continuing problem.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Anyone else? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Budget transfer 14-12, another from the nursing home, this is $330,000. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Mr. Kurtz, second. Seconded by Ms. Burksen. Comments or questions? Mr. Hartke, anything to add?
Same story.
Same story. Mr. Langenheim.
Thank you again. I'd like to have a little bit of amplification on how this particular problem arose. Why are we short of feeding people on Alzheimer's? Does anybody know?
Yeah, Mr. Hartke, please.
I, I don't think that that's, that's, again, not the problem. This is not a shortage of money. This is excess money budgeted, because, again, we budget for full staff that we never achieve. Again, that is an issue that's moving forward, but we, we move this money regularly between line items, it's to cover needs that appear in different areas through the dynamic changes of the year. It's mostly bookkeeping. It is not an increase of any kind in the amount of money that the nursing home is spending.
Thank you, Mr. Hartke. Ms. Michaels, and then Mr. Maxwell.
If I heard Mr. Langenheim, I think what he was asking is that, was somebody not getting fed? But what it is, is it's paying for the people that were working in that unit, so they had to move it to that line item.
Mr. Maxwell, and then Mr. Quisenberry.
I think the bulk of this $330,000 amendment is primarily because we went from our own staff in the dietary to a contractor who now is providing the staff, so we had to move the money from money that we would have paid our own folks and over into the contractor's item.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Mr. Langenheim.
Am I correct that your answer is that this is not new money, as you're just being transferred from one account to another?
That is correct. Mr. Quisenberry.
$330,000 is not a mere bag of tail, you know.
Essentially, we, we have budget for 20 food service employees, but we only have 15 on staff, so we have to contract for the five additional people. Those are considered different line items, so we didn't spend the money on the budgeted, you know, paid staff, we spent it on contracted staff. So it's not an additional amount of money, it's just going out a different way. I think essentially, when you're in this mode, you end up being understaffed, so that's why it doesn't turn out being more, because contracted money or staff usually costs more, but you're not filling all of the hours that you'd be filling if you were fully staffed.
Thank you, Mr. Quisenberry. I don't see anybody disagreeing with that. Anyone else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Budget Amendment 14-40, $6,959 of revenue to reimburse the property and liability insurance line for auto damage caused by others. May I have a motion? Mr. Esri, second. Mr. James. Any discussion? Mr. James.
Who's auto? I hope it wasn't Van Anderson's.
It was one of our sheriff's vehicles, and the other driver was the responsible party, and their insurance paid for the damage, so that's what we're doing here.
It wasn't anything in the memo, so...
Yeah, you were in, I was also in the dark. Any additional questions? Need a license number or anything? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Budget Amendment 14-41, $200,000 from the county bridge fund for construction of bridges. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. John Jay and seconded by Ms. Card. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Turn the page. Budget Amendment 14-42, this is from the circuit, or the, excuse me, the county clerk. $6,015 from the fund balance to cover postage required for elections. Mr. Holton cannot be here tonight, so Ms. Bucy...
Administrative Services.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, it is Administrative Services, but it's elections, so I assume it's related to the, to the clerk. All right, Deb's going to explain this.
Administrative Services manages postage for everybody, and so the entire postage budget is in our budget. And we had some turnover this year, and on October 1st, the individual who is handling the budget for postage thought it would just be easier if we just purchased postage for the entire amount for the postage machine that we had left budgeted for the rest of this year, not realizing that we get, we get individual billings for postage. So what that means is, our postage meter is going to have probably about $15,000 on it on January 1st, which will help next year's budget, but in the meantime, we had this outstanding obligation, which needs to be covered, because it was an expense. And, I mean, we all, this was always an expense that belongs to Administrative Services. This particular one was for elections. We've talked to everyone else, and we think this is the only outstanding expenditure we will have outside of running the normal postage machine for the rest of the year.
Thank you, Deb. Questions?
Move for...
Moved by Mr. Schrader, seconded by Mr. Esri. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Budget Amendment 14-44, accepting $500 from the ladies auxiliary from VFW Post 630 for the Veterans Assistance Commission. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Ms. Card. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Budget Amendment 14-45, from the Regional Planning Commission, $40,000 in pass-through for a contract with the city of Champaign, providing case management services for Bristol Place. May I have a motion? Mr. Esri, may I have a second? Mr. John Jay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh-oh.
And motion carries. Budget Amendment 14-46, $37,000 in increased appropriations from the fund balance for the physical plant budget. And I will ask for a motion to send this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Moved by Mr. Langenheim, seconded by Mr. Quisenberry. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And finally, off of the addendum. This one really is from the county clerk. This is appropriations of $14,193 from the fund balance to cover election expenses, and this is the one that Deb has agreed to speak to. May I have a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Moved by Mr. Harper and seconded by Ms. Michaels. Deb, do you want to give an explanation behind this?
With the early voting and the additional sites and the time that was spent there, the county clerk ended up spending more than what had been budgeted on temporary, which is one of the line items of this budget amendment, $3,0968. And then the overtime line item is primarily due to the fact that he had several staff members who were maxed out on comp time, which means we have to pay them overtime, and so, and he has to have them working in, in the weeks leading up to the election.
Thanks, Deb. Any questions or discussion? I apologize, I couldn't be particularly descriptive of this in the finance memo, because I didn't know what it was either. Questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our, we'll go to Item G. This is animal control. May I have a motion to request approval of acceptance of the ASPCA grant to subsidize the spay and neuter program? Mr. James and Mr. Hartke. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ditto for the Petco Foundation grant to subsidize the spay and neuter program. Moved by Ms. Michaels.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hartke again. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Request approval of application for renewal, and if accepted, award of the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority grant for the Children's Advocacy Center. Moved by Mr. Kurtz and seconded by Mr. Maxwell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Request approval from the Regional Planning Commission of RFP 2004-9 for electronics recycling contractor for the 2015 Countywide Residential Electronic Collection Event. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mr. Esri. Discussion? Mr. James.
I would just like to know, I know in the past there was only like, what, two vendors that anybody coming up to the plate to bid on this? Because wasn't it canceled last time?
Right, it was canceled this fall and...
Hold on, wait till we can hear you on the mic.
It was canceled this fall. It's a statewide shutdown of cathode ray tube in televisions with tubes. And the quotas will be reset this January. We expect collectors will be, they're already looking for collections to take place beginning in 2015, and we expect the quotas to be met by June. And it's a problem that's, the lame duck session, there will be some legislation hopefully to fix. So we're gonna have a collection pending this RFP approval process, one in March, mid-March, and one in mid-April at Parkland College.
So I'm sorry, can you elaborate on this quota? I don't, wasn't aware there was one.
Right, the state legislation that bans electronics from Illinois landfills sets quotas for manufacturers. They need to collect so many pounds of electronics. It's sort of like a stewardship down the line kind of thing. They manufacture and they need to see to it that so many pounds of their electronics are properly recycled. So they pay electronics collectors to do that.
But they're only required to collect a certain amount, and beyond that, they don't collect anymore?
Right. Because it's money. So...
Because it's money.
Well...
You need no additional explanation than that. Any additional questions, or Susan? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. And then I may have, in a similar vein, I may have a motion to request approval of an application for 2015 IEPA Electronics Projects Recycling and Reuse Grant. Mr. Kibler?
Second.
And Mr., who is that? Mr. Harkie? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for your patience. We'll move on to the county administrator for the fiscal year 2014 budget projection and budget change reports.
The report looks substantially the same as it has been looking. We look like we should achieve 97% of our budgeted revenue this fiscal year. And continuing in the downward trend are the non-business licenses and permits, which reflect real estate transactions, recording, purchase document storage fees. And further down in the bottom third, the general government fees, projected to be down right at $1 million. If you turn to the next page, the expenditures, within almost all categories, we anticipate underspending the budget with the exception of postage, gas service, and medical services. So we anticipate spending right at 96% of the budgeted expenditure, which brings us to a projection that would end this fiscal year with a deficit of right at $530,000, which is actually really good news because we always expected that this budget, being the 13-month budget that it is, would experience about a $1 million deficit. So that's, we maintain a $5.5 million fund balance if we achieve that, which is at 15%, which is as healthy as our fund balance has been in quite a few years. And then the budget change report on the back has only changed by $1,000 since last month.
Questions? Thank you to the Finance Committee for helping make those numbers happen. May I have a motion to accept this and place it on file? Mr. Quisenberry and Ms. Coort.
I do have a question.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Remind me, Deb, what is our target fund balance?
Our target fund balance is 12.5%, but it's really something that we should review. Our recent Moody's rating analysis kept us at AA2, but the, one of the only two things that could help us improve that rating is if we adopted a fund balance policy of probably 20% or higher.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations on extending an extra month into this year of expenses and keeping our fund balance where we wanted it to be. I think originally, we were expecting we were gonna dip below that target number, and this is great news.
Sometimes there is good news. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Kibler.
Actually, a quick question on something you said, Ms. Bucy. Is it just to have the target of 20% or attaining the target and keeping it for a while?
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
Just curious.
But establishing a policy that your, that your goal is 20% would be required to also have, you know, that you would keep it.
Our target is 100%, Mr. Kibler.
That's right.
All those in favor of accepting the report and placing it on file, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now for the main event. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2015 annual tax levy ordinance? Send this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Harkie. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. And finally, approval of the fiscal year 2015 Champaign County budget. May I have a motion to send the fiscal year 2014, fiscal year 2015, excuse me, annual budget appropriation ordinance to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Harkie again.
You can say no.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. I have no other business, I have no chair's report. Items for consent are A2, C2, and 3, F1, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, and 10, G1 and 2, H1, I1, and 2. That concludes finance.
He's right. How would he know? Wow, that's very good. James?
Didn't make the dynamic box.
Yeah, look at that, 10 after 9, it's all right.
Nice try.
I think you can, we can move quickly through this.
As long as you don't talk, Al.
Okay. Well, just for that, may I have the microphone, please?
You do have to talk. All right, good evening, everyone. We're gonna start off with appointments and reappointments. The first one is for the Animal Control Administrator, one position for term of December 1st, 2014 through November 30th, 2016. Mr. Chair.
My choice, Stephanie Chews.
Second.
Second? Was that you, Mr. James?
Chris.
Okay, I'll take Mr. Alex then. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have the Nursing Home Board of Directors. We have two positions for term, for a term that would go from December 1st, 2014 through November 30th, 2016. Mr. Chair.
My two applicants' choices are Mary Hudson and Dr. Robert Palinkas.
Seconded by Mr. Maxwell. Any discussion? Ms. Petrie.
Yes, I do want it on the record of, I'm quite impressed with the credentials of Mr. Johnson, and I do hope that hearing that, he will consider applying for other positions or in some way, we can take advantage of his expertise and relationship to the nursing home. Thank you very much.
All right, seeing no further discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That's one way to get it done. Passed unanimously. Next up, for the County Board of Health, one unexpired term ending June 30th, 2016. Mr. Chair.
My appointment is David King, please.
Seconded by Mr. Kibler. Discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Also passes unanimously. Moving right along, for the Public Aid Appeals Committee, two terms running from December 1st, 2014 through November 30th, 2016. Mr. Chair.
Michelle Meyerall and James Rusk are my appointments.
Seconded by Mr. Maxwell. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Also passes unanimously. Next up, for the Rural Transit Advisory Group, we have, I'll note, five positions with a term of December 1st, 2014 through November 30th, 2016. Looks like we need to shake the trees a little bit for applicants. Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you, James. We only have two applicants, and both are excellent. I wish we could get more, but lately, we've seen trouble with volunteers. We've had it throughout this past year. But my two appointments are Seamus Riley and Mary Sleeth.
Seconded by Mr. James. Mr. Alex.
Seamus is pretty loud. He probably counts for two or three.
He's pretty good.
Yeah, my, my question...
I'll let him know that you said that, Chris. All right.
My question would be, does this body have enough people to conduct business?
What's that?
What's the total, is this, is it total of five on this group? So there's only two people?
No, there's seven.
There's seven?
No, you're talking about how many are on the board.
Okay, so there's four.
No, there's seven.
Okay.
Five opens, right.
Okay.
So it'll be four now.
Okay. Ms. Petrie.
If there's seven and there's five openings, has anybody checked these term dates? I don't understand how there could be five all of a sudden.
Well, some are resigning due to other commitments, so they're getting off. They announced it at our last meeting. It isn't that their term's ending, I don't think.
And I would point out, I think one of those five vacancies is Mr. James, who's a county board liaison, who will be going off, but a new county board liaison will be seated in December. So then that brings it down to just two vacancies.
But that is a good point, Patsy. We don't want to, because of resignations, lose track of the terms. So, thank you. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passed unanimously. And finally, in our appointments area, for the Senior Services Advisory Committee, again, we have three positions, looks like two applicants, for a term that goes from December 1st, 2014 through November 30th, 2017. Seconded by Mr. Kibler. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passed unanimously. Moving right along, we have the county clerk's report here. Clerk's not here, but I would entertain a motion to accept the report and place it on file. Mr. Harper, on file.
File.
No, Gordy's not here, you know, we can do what we want. Mr. Kibler, Mr. Kibler seconds, putting it on fire, on file.
And it's been seconded.
Yep. And, and the clerk is not here, so we don't have anyone to answer questions. I, if you see anything, I encourage you to drop him an email or call him up. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That was, sounded like Ralph to me. Your vote has been noted. That passed, though. Now we're into the county administrator area. There's a report from Administrative Services for October. I'd entertain a motion to accept that and place it on file. Moved by Mr. Esri. Seconded by Ms. Cowart. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Deb, did you have anything you want to call out? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Next up, we have an approval of the renewal of property liability and workers' compensation policies for fiscal year 2015. I'd entertain a motion to do that.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Alex. Seconded by Mr. Kurtz. Deb, did you want to give any highlights to that before we go further?
This is substantially a renewal of your current policies with very few changes, and Molly Rollings from Diamond Brothers has been sitting here patiently all evening.
Oh, wow.
And I'm sure would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. It's been an interesting conversation, at least. There's only a couple changes to note that are of a significant nature this year. The first is a very positive change. The nursing home umbrella used to be at a $5 million total underlying limit. This year, with new reinsurance through the ICRMT program, that has been increased to a $9 million umbrella, bringing it to $10 million total, with actually very, very little extra cost in. So that was a very positive thing. The only other change that was very significant was, we unfortunately had two claims under the workers' compensation this year go through the self-insured retention, meaning that they have exceeded $250,000. In order to keep costs in line, we looked at a different option of increasing the self-insured retention to $300,000 versus staying at the $250,000. In my opinion, it's a much smarter move to go to the $300,000 because in the last seven years, you have not had any claims, I mean, you've had two claims go over $250,000, so you all have a very good history and you don't have a lot of large losses. So my recommendation is to save the money and take the $300,000 for this year, and then next year, we look at dropping it back down to $250,000. Everything else stays the same. We did our standard 4% increase on the property insurance of the values of the buildings and the contents and the inland marine coverages. So we took very little rate increase this year, which is really good news. Any questions?
Ms. Schwartz.
Just a quick question about the excess liability for the county. Why do we have a 30% increase?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, the 30%...
There is a 33.5% increase in the premium for excess liability, the $15 million for the county, from $126,000 to $174,000.
That stems from, unfortunately, law enforcement liability across the state took a really, really bad hit this year. So all law enforcement departments, we were lucky enough to keep it down a little bit under because your department is performing above average compared to other departments. Unfortunately, that excess policy does go over the top of the law enforcement liability as well, so we've had, that's actually where the majority of the increase is actually coming in, is from the law enforcement liability.
Other questions? Thank you for staying for our marathon meeting. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion passes unanimously. And we also have, next up, we have a resolution honoring county employees who have served us for a long time, various numbers of years. We will take on the resolution honoring the, well, we'll read them at the full board meeting.
Okay.
When we actually enact the resolution, so...
Move to the full board for a second.
Okay, Mr. Alex, and thank you, Mr. James. Any discussion? Mr. Harkie.
What is, what was the date of this, the event when we honor our employees? I think you told us.
Yeah, the event will be Thursday, December 11th, at 2:30 PM at the Urbana Civic Center. And yes, we would strongly encourage as many board members, all board members, to be there for that event that afternoon.
Thank you.
And instead of lunch, you're gonna get cookies and punch.
Mr. Jay? One more time on the date.
Thursday, December 11th, at 2:30.
Urbana Civic Center. Pass board member?
All right. Mr. Maxwell?
I did note in my report that there will be employee recognition reception at the nursing home. Can you help with the dates?
That one is Wednesday, December 10th, at 2 o'clock in one of the dining rooms at the nursing home.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Didn't expect that. That passes unanimously, but it will not be on consent. And then we have another, similar resolution honoring those employees that are retiring. Mr. Kurtz moves. Seconded by Astrid. Any questions or discussion that, Ms. Petrie?
Just a question of clarification. Do we have any method for recognizing board members who are leaving the board?
We do.
Kick us out, knock us out the door.
That is done at the county board meeting in November.
Oh, so I blew something, huh?
No, it's fine. Good catch.